Good evening, I'm Rebecca Hawthorne, President of the League of Women Voters, Wayzetta Plymouth area. And I'd like to welcome our candidates this evening, as well as our audience and our viewers, on behalf of the League of Women Voters Wayzetta Plymouth area and our co-hosts, the Crystal New Hope East Plymouth Robinsdale League. The League of Women Voters is a 104-year-old volunteer, nonpartisan organization that encourages the informed and active participation of citizens in government, works to increase understanding of public policy issues, and influences public policy through education and advocacy. The League does not support or oppose any political party or candidate. The views expressed in this forum are those of the candidates, not those of the League of Women Voters. It is our purpose in sponsoring forums such as these to provide you with the opportunity to hear candidates discuss face-to-face the issues that are important to you. This is a nonpartisan forum, and we ask that campaign buttons or campaign t-shirts not be worn, nor signs, nor literature be distributed in this room. Please silence your electronic devices at this time. And now I'd like to introduce our moderator for this evening's forum, Patty Robles, a member of the League of Women Voters, Brooklyn Park, Osseo, Maple Grove area. Thank you Patty.
Good evening. Tonight's forum is provided to give you the opportunity to learn about the candidates running for City Council Awards 1, 3, and At Large. Oops, I should maybe get closer to that. There is never enough time to cover all the issues in a setting such as this. If your questions are not addressed, feel free to contact the candidate directly. The League of Women Voters posts complete unedited recordings of its forums. Editing is authorized only for the official media reporting. Only the full, unedited recordings may be used by other persons and organizations. The rules for this evening's forum are as follows. Candidates will be allowed a one-minute opening statement to state their experiences, platform, and objectives. A question-and-answer period will follow the opening statements. The answers will be confined to one minute unless designated by me, the moderator. Opening statements will be given in alphabetical order by office being sought, and questions will be answered in rotating order. A 15-second warning will be given to the candidates. The candidates will also be giving a two-minute closing statement. Candidates, please finish your sentence quickly when you see the stop sign, or you will be interrupted. Kindly, but you will be interrupted. No reference of a personal nature will be tolerated. A person's public record may be examined, but not their character. This forum is made available to encourage the voting public to focus on the issues and not on personalities. We ask that there be no demonstrations in support or opposition to the candidates or their positions, and that candidates be allowed their full time to get their points across. The public has been encouraged to submit questions online in advance of this forum. For those in the audience, if you have a question, write it on a 3x5 card available from our volunteers, and raise your hand to have it picked up. Audience questions will be taken for the first 30 minutes of the forum. The timekeeper will alert the moderator when 30 minutes has elapsed. Questions that are unclear, hostile, or of a personal nature will not be used. Those that fall in the same general area may be consolidated. The city... Let's see, before we do that, I want you to note where the timekeepers are. So, timekeepers, if you could raise your hand so that our candidates can see you and where your signs are. The city of Plymouth has three races on the ballot: City Council Ward 1, City Council Ward 2, and City Council at Large.
Three.
Or three. I'm sorry. Council Ward 3. Sorry about that. Thank you. And, okay, let's start again. City Council Ward 1, City Council Ward 3, and City Council at Large. The candidates running for Plymouth City Council Ward 1 are Shyne Mahi and Kim Nelson. The candidates running for Plymouth City Council Ward 3 are Scott Aldrich, Catherine Chesnick, Declan McCrory, and Julie Ritz-Schlefer. Julie. Julie. Did I get that right, Schlefer?
Yes.
Thank you. The candidates running for Plymouth City Council at Large are Armita Pilstrum, Joel Spoonheim, and Craig Erkhart. We'll begin with City Council Ward 1 candidates to give their introductory remarks, starting with Shyne Mahi. Thank you.
Good evening, everybody. I'm glad to see you all here, and I am honored for League of Women Voters to invite us here to talk to you all and express our agenda and our why we are running here. I'm Dr. Subashni Mahi-Pati, and some of the community knows by me, by my full name, Dr. Subashni Mahi-Pati, and some of the other community members know me by Shyne Mahi. But I chose the Shyne Mahi just because it can fit on my long signboard. It's easy and small. I've been living here in Plymouth for the last 18 years. I'm a practicing physician, and I am a mom, and I'm a retired Army Major, and I've been having a business in Plymouth City. So, I feel that I have obligation to run for Plymouth City.
Thank you. Kim Nelson.
Good evening. Thank you to the League of Women Voters for pulling this and other forums together. I appreciate the work you do on these. I know a lot more work goes into these than people would even realize, so thank you for that. I'd also like to thank my fellow candidates for participating tonight. We're all here participating in the democratic process, so thank you for being here. My name is Kim Nelson. I'm the current City Councilperson in Ward 1. I was lucky enough to be appointed in March, so I'm relatively new, so not everyone knows me. Just a bit about how I work. I work within a couple guidelines. First, if it's not broke, don't fix it. So, when it comes to things like our city's financials, our AAA bond rating, keeping property taxes low, I'm in support of that kind of stuff. However, I also work under "we don't know what we don't know." So, with that said, I'm here to listen to the people of Plymouth and what's happening in their neighborhoods, and explore innovative best practices and out-of-the-box thinking throughout the nation. Thank you.
Thank you. Now, we will hear from candidates for City Council Ward 3, beginning with Scott Aldrich.
Hi, my name is Scott Aldrich. I'm running for Ward 3 in Plymouth City Council. I've lived in Plymouth for over a decade. I have kids in the public schools, high school, middle, and elementary right now. I run a small business. I'm also an IT leader at Mortenson Construction. I've knocked on nearly 2,000 doors so far, and there's been overwhelming support from people of all different backgrounds and political affiliations. Reasons that they supported me is when I knock on the door, I mean, 80% of people in Plymouth just want their roads paved. They just want police and fire funded. They want fiscal responsibility. They want politics out of City Council. And that's a promise I'm going to have, is I won't bring politics to City Council. One thing you'll also notice is if you see my signs around, you won't see my signs with any particular political party. You'll see them with all sorts of people. They won't be clustered with a specific party.
Thank you. Catherine Chesnick.
Hi, my name is Catherine Chesnick, and I'm currently on City Council. I'm also Plymouth's Commissioner to the Bassett Creek Watershed for seven years, and I'm Plymouth's Commissioner for the, I'm sorry, Elm Creek for seven years, and Bassett Creek for five years. I currently chair the Bassett Creek Watershed Commission, and I've invested a lot of time and energy in learning what makes the city tick, and what our residents need. The things I'm committed to are preserving Plymouth's strengths, like our park-like neighborhoods and our thriving business sector, our incredible financial status, and our parks, and cultural diversity, while simultaneously preparing for growth of the metro area and making sure that our redevelopment decisions are balancing the needs of many stakeholders, not serving only some. And I'm also very committed to listening to residents.
Thank you very much. Declan McCrory.
Hello, thanks for coming here tonight. My name's Declan, and I decided to run for Plymouth City Council last year when all the wildfire smoke was rolling in from Canada. I think the environment is a great thing that we can work on fixing here in Plymouth. As I keep hearing, we're the fourth biggest economy. That means we got a lot that we could do for helping the environment. And then through my job, working with kids previously, now brain injury people, or people with brain injuries, I've learned how to be patient and how to communicate with a lot of different people, and those are great skills to have for, I think, in government. Thank you.
Thank you. Julie Ritz-Schlefer.
Hello, Plymouth. I am running for Ward 3 because I hope to make Plymouth an even better place to live and work, where people are happy and healthy, more fulfilled and engaged, and most importantly, feel safe. My decades of experience as an attorney, my training as a mediator, and my passion for volunteerism make me an ideal candidate. And like many of you, I am also a parent, and I am concerned about our children's safety and the quality of our schools, and will support measures to increase resources and build partnerships. As someone who walks her dogs and uses the trails, I will work to improve the maintenance and year-round accessibility of our green spaces and pathways, while encouraging the expansion of climate-friendly ways to connect our neighborhoods and improve our health. Finally, I will ensure that we make smart decisions regarding our limited undeveloped land...
Thank you very much.
...while maintaining our high-quality standards.
All right. And our introductory remarks now from candidates for City Council at Large. First, we'll hear from Armita Pilstrum.
Thank you, Patty, and thank you for being the moderator. And a special thank you for Women League Voters, for having us here, all the candidates. I am a proud Plymouth resident of 22 years. I am the first homeowner in Plymouth. My son graduated from Wayzetta School District 284 and went on to be a D1 swimmer. I love the city of Plymouth. If you ask me what I stand on, for much is given, much is required. I too am an independent, nonpartisan for the city of Plymouth for At Large. I am tied to no party, just like women voters. I believe that we should sit here and represent all the residents, and that is my job to do if you vote for me on November 5th. I am a proud business owner of seven years for Pilstrum Consulting Group. I have brought jobs to Plymouth for economic development.
Thank you very much. Next, we'll hear from Joel Spoonheim.
Good evening, and thanks to the League for hosting tonight. My name's Joel Spoonheim, and I'm seeking your support to serve as your City Council Member at Large. My wife and kids and I moved here nine years ago, and our kids attend Wayzetta Public Schools. And like a dad, I got immediately involved as a volunteer, as a coach with our Parks and Rec Department, and as Assistant Scout Master for my kids' troops. But I also got involved as a community leader, and two city councils in a row have now appointed me to commissions: first, the Environmental Quality Commission, and now the Housing and Redevelopment Authority. In addition, I serve on other boards and organizations, working to advise both city councils and the school board in our area. I'm running, also using my background of 15 years as a business leader in healthcare, and 10 years as a city planner and economic development director in Brooklyn Park. So, I bring these decades of volunteering and public service, and look forward to sharing that to keep our community strong and making a place that we all remain proud of. Thank you.
Thank you. Craig Erkhart.
Good evening, all. Thank you very much to League of Women Voters. Thank you all for attending, and for all the Plymouth residents listening out there. My name is Craig Erkhart, and I am running for Plymouth City Council for the At Large seat. I have lived in this area my entire life. I work in the city of Plymouth. I pursued multiple volunteer activities. I've been a youth sports coach for many years, and I was a higher education advocate for the University of Minnesota system. Now, look, Plymouth is an exceptional city, and we have a lot to protect here. There are three pillars in my campaign. The first is public safety, supporting our police, fire, and EMS. Second is fiscal responsibility, ensuring that we're not overtaxing, not overspending, focusing on our core competencies such as roads, bridges, parks. And third, I believe we have the most exceptional parks in the state, and as your city council, I will work to expand and maintain those spaces. My name is Craig Erkhart, running for Plymouth City Council at Large. I hope to earn all your support. Thank you.
Thank you. I will now start the questions. You have one minute. We're going to go in rotating, random order. And also, if you need me to repeat a question because you happen to be a little bit further down the line, go ahead and just request it, and I have no problem repeating a question. The first question is, what is your top priority for Plymouth as a City Council candidate? How would you work with the community to address it if elected? And we're going to hear first from Julie Ritz-Schlefer.
Well, I believe that my top priority should be and is engagement of the community. I think that the more that we engage the community, the stronger our community can become. I think one way to do that is better communication, so that the community knows what the council and the city are doing, because I think an informed committee is also more engaged committee. I think it helps with issues of transparency and accountability when they have information and working with them. I want to be a good listener. I think that that is a skill that I've developed as a family law attorney and mediator, and you need to hear the people and show concern, and hopefully you'll be able to help them.
Joel Spoonheim.
My top priority is actually to respond to what citizens have been saying in our community for quite a while. Survey after survey, our citizens have asked for more local businesses, more local restaurants, and more housing that's affordable, so that when seniors want to move out of their home but stay in Plymouth on a fixed income, they can do so. So, that when our employers are looking to hire people at an entry-level job, they can live here and work here. And we can do all that by also responding to what employers are asking for, which is streamlined regulations to make it easier to invest and expand as we look at the older parts of the city that are ready for a new life to be breathed into them. So, my priorities are to fulfill what's already being asked, and to bring the years I have spent streamlining regulations and listening to citizens to fruition.
Thank you. Shyne Mahi.
Along with being a practicing physician, I have completed my, I graduated MBA 2. I literally like to take care of the economy, physically responsible as a parent and as a mom, taking care of the family, and I do take care of the city the same. So, during my door knocks, I have noticed many people were concerned about the small businesses, like they don't have an opportunity to take their kids and family for dinners or any entertainment where it is family-friendly. So, I totally agree with that, because we are losing our economy from what we make the money. We are losing it to the neighboring cities where people are going for their restaurants, food, or anything. So, I want to concentrate and improve, like, small businesses, and support the small businesses for the Plymouth City. Thank you.
Thank you. Scott Aldrich.
Yeah, as I've been knocking neighborhoods, my opinion of what's most important has been evolving, and in fact, it depends on the neighborhood what's most important. So, I was knocking doors yesterday off of Saratoga, south of Highway 55, and there was someone that lived there for over three decades, and she was telling me that, and she lives by herself, she keeps her blinds shut and her door locked at all times because she thinks that she doesn't feel safe. Now, other parts of town, I don't think that's an issue, and I think Plymouth does do a pretty good job, but I do think public safety is something that's really important. I think everyone should feel safe. I was really surprised that that existed in Plymouth, and so I'd like to resolve that. Another thing that a lot of people in Ward 3 talk about is the Four Seasons Mall, trying to find a solution with that. That would be something of importance as well.
Thank you. Kim Nelson.
Well, when you ask for, I have plenty of priorities, but when you ask for my top priority, it is to be accessible to the people of Plymouth. The folks in our neighborhood know what's going on more so than anyone, so whether we're talking about bringing in new business, or affordable housing, or public safety, the folks in our neighborhood know better than anyone and have every right to give their input on what they expect here in Plymouth. So, that would be my number-one thing. I've pledged to be absolutely accessible. My cell phone number, my direct cellphone number, is 763-349-0440. Feel free to call me if you have any concerns, any great ideas, or just want to grab a cup of coffee. I genuinely want to get to know all of my neighbors, so that would be my top priority.
Thank you. Catherine Chesnick.
Thank you. My first priority will be preserving what we have first. I like the statement, "If it ain't broke, don't fix it." We have a lot going right in Plymouth, including our park-like neighborhoods, high-safety schools for the most part. And my second priority will be preparing for the growth of the metro. So, we have a lot coming at us, as Candidate Spoonheim mentioned, in terms of helping seniors stay in Plymouth, and also working with developers to redevelop the parcels, because Plymouth is at a really pivotal time right now in terms of all of our farmland is gone, and all of our decisions right now are going to be redevelopment decisions. And I would like to help with that by bringing the stakeholders together, and really hearing from everyone, and threading the needle on finding solutions.
Stop, excuse me, I'm sorry. Always not paying attention to our timer. Thank you so much. Craig Erkhart.
Thank you, Patty. My first and foremost priority is public safety. Without public safety, there is no quality of life. One of the main reasons I'm running is when I first moved to Plymouth, I lived up in northeast Plymouth, back by the old Four Seasons, when it was still structured. I was sitting in the living room one night, and I heard gunshots from my living room. And in the city of Plymouth, in this exceptional city that we have, that is absolutely unbelievably unnecessary. We need to do all we can to support our police, our fire, and our EMS, to ensure that everyone is safe in our community and feels safe. But look, it's not just one idea, all right? It involves listening to the entire community, because public safety means a lot of different things to a lot of different parts of the community. So, we need to listen to all of our residents to find solutions to have a sustainable, safe future for our Plymouth residents. Thank you.
Thank you. Armita Pilstrum.
Well, everyone said so many great things, so I'm just going to echo the one that's the closest to my heart. My husband and I both graduated from the Carlson School of Business Management, University of Minnesota. I've been married for 28 years, beautiful years, no prenup. And what I found from being a wife and a mother, and living in Plymouth for 22 years, is one thing, and I have served on this committee and been very involved, is economic development. When you look at the quality of life we have in Plymouth, jobs, our homes, affordable housing, being able to go outside and take a five-mile run with my husband, and have that safety, for us, I think the biggest thing is making sure we're partnering with businesses so they can bring jobs, and we can strengthen our economy for the present future, but the future generations to come. That's what would be my first priority. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, question two. Oops, Declan, I left you out. I'm so sorry. Declan McCrory.
I would say my top priority would be helping out with the environment. Wayzetta has solar panels on its city hall now. I'm wondering why we don't. We can switch cars over that the city uses to electric or maybe hybrid, whichever one works best. I know the Eden Prairie Police Force has started experimenting with electric cars as well. I see no reason we should not do the same. Just encouraging native plant growth throughout the city as well, and then housing, rapid transit, buses, maybe a light rail in the future, I don't know. Well, it hasn't done too well going to Eden Prairie yet, but we'll see what happens. Just, yeah, more planning, since, as has been stated, we are out of undeveloped space in Plymouth now.
All right, thank you. Let's go with question two, and I'm going to give you a couple names in advance to kind of prep you a little bit. We didn't do that in the first question, but we're going to go to it going forward. Plymouth is nearly fully developed and beginning to experience redevelopment. What are your thoughts on the opportunities that might be created for the city? Please briefly share your views and vision. Declan McCrory, we'll start with you, and then Craig Erkhart right after.
Well, redevelop means a lot of construction, so that would be a lot of money coming into the city. Then we'll need to make sure that we have all the water, sewage, electrical, all that that our city can handle, as I think increasing housing will be a top priority there. I know, looking at our city's 2040 plan, we're only about, I don't know, 1,000 or less away from the population we were expected to hit in 2040, and we're nowhere near 2040 right now, so we're going to need to build more houses, or apartments, or whatever people might want to live in if we want to increase our population.
Thank you. Craig Erkhart.
Thank you. Given that we are mostly developed out, I believe that the redevelopment of Plymouth should be a top issue for everybody up here. It involves reinvigorating our old and unused buildings, and making them, you know, up to the standards of where we want to see Plymouth for the future. You know, I think that every decision that we make in our redevelopment, we should ask ourselves three questions. Does this make us more or less safe? Is what we're doing fiscally responsible? And what is the environmental impact of the decisions that we're making? And that should be clearly communicated to all the Plymouth residents. Thank you.
Thank you. We're going to go next to Kim Nelson, and then Armita Pilstrum after. Kim, Kim Nelson.
Thank you. Folks, my day job is in Government Affairs for the North Central State's Regional Council of Carpenters, so I understand construction, I understand economic development, I understand planning and zoning. First, redevelopment, it's needed, right? It's needed for a vibrant city. So, I would support any efforts to take more old, dilapidated buildings that aren't being used anymore, and put something new there. Couple of things that I would love to see in town here, I'd love to see a marquee hotel, one that could actually house a good number of people. Right now, we're spending a lot of time attracting visitors to the city, attracting hockey tournaments, but those families are packing up, and they're going to Bloomington, they're staying in Bloomington, they're dining in Bloomington, they're shopping in Bloomington. So, I'd love to see us attract a marquee hotel, and I'd also like to make sure that as we build, we think about connecting communities.
Thank you very much. Armita Pilstrum.
Thank you. One thing that we are working on right now in the city of Plymouth is called, raise your hand, Hello Plymouth. Have you guys heard about it? Awesome. We need more of you to know about it. It's a really cool thing, because it's really partnering and targeting travel and leisure and tourism coming to the city of Plymouth. Very similar to what Kim just shared, is that that is going to help be a revenue generator back into the city of Plymouth, where we can think about planning and zoning, and then reusing some of the buildings to remodel them, but also think about when we have conventions, why are we going to the surrounding suburbs? Why don't they come here to Plymouth? No place like Plymouth, right? So, that's what I would say could be a huge thing that we can help promote, and have people learn more about Hello Plymouth. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is going to be Scott Aldrich, and then Joel Spoonheim. Scott Aldrich.
Yes, so, there was a, Maxfield Research did a study, a comprehensive rental housing study, and now it's a few years old now, but they're saying we need, I think, when I added up the numbers, about 5,000 more units by 2030, which sounds incredible. So, I think if we did do redevelopment, housing would be included in that. I think it would be beautiful if we could redevelop kind of that southeast corner of of Madison Lake. I, I would like, redevelopments that we do include parks, pickleball courts. I like pickleball, so that's a thing that I, I would like to see done. But yeah, so I think it's got to include housing. I think, I think commercial with housing above would be very interesting to see what that looks like. And that's, that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Joel Spoonheim.
So cities are constantly changing, and suburbs like Plymouth do one of two things when they get to this point. They either continue to grow and reinvest, or they stagnate and slide behind. And I believe that we can focus on redevelopment to really bring to our future what we've been asking for, more restaurants, grocery stores, housing, et cetera. So redevelopment is exciting, and I'm going to geek out for a moment, because I'm a nerd, and I'm going to say that the way we need to do this is through some very nerdy things. We need to streamline our zoning code and regulations and our comp plan, because they make it risky for developers to do work here. We have too many hurdles, too many steps, and we can improve that. Number two, we do not have a housing fund like other suburbs, and as a result, we can't always attract in the housing that we want as we look at redevelopment. And so my work has been on the Housing Commission to already address by having some of the right policies adopted, and I've been championing creating this housing fund, and will continue to do so as your council member.
Thank you. Before we go to the next candidate, it's 7:30, and so the timekeeper has signaled that 30 minutes have, have elapsed, so no more questions from the audience, and we'll proceed, oh, and now we'll proceed with Kathryn Chesnick, and after her shine, Mahi.
Thank you. Yes, with redevelopment, there are a lot of opportunities. There's opportunities to increase options for public transit, and alternatives to cars such as bike trails and pedestrian, redeveloping city center, and including updating zoning so that there could be mixed use with walkable, charming downtown neighborhood, with restaurants and activities, and people who live there. I think another key component will be supporting our business community to keep our property taxes low as we go through redevelopment, and as we look at affordable housing, redevelopment challenges, developing along our main transportation corridors, and along with that, supporting that development through public safety, so we preserve what we have while taking advantage of opportunities going forward.
Thank you. Shine Mahi.
I believe that development is never a constant one, like, development is an ongoing thing. I mean, like, even a country can't say that, "Oh, we are developed, and we stopped doing things." So it is ongoing thing, and I think even like after 20 years or 25 years of our home, we also renovate our house, and we add new tools, or, you know, instruments, or anything, whatever is new is available. So development should be ongoing, and I believe that we have certain older structures which are not heritage, but which can be taken down, and we can build new structures with new plans where you have the businesses, and on the top of there, like, you can have the apartments and affordable housing. And I do believe that development is an ongoing thing, and I, I, I believe that. Thank you.
Thank you. Julie Rich Schlefer.
So I think that one thing that the city needs to do in order to keep meeting the needs of the residents is to ensure that we have a really strong tax base. And as our needs grow, our tax base needs to grow. So we need to do things that will then add to it. And so I have lived in my home for 31 years, and have watched a very large piece of property where the Four Seasons Shopping Mall was, and has now been vacant for a decade, sit empty, and it seems like that would be something that we should focus on, and maybe bring some more people to that part of the city. It's not a place where you're hearing gunshots at night. I don't hear them in my neighborhood, sorry. But I, I do feel that it's a safe neighborhood, and I would like to see more development in my neighborhood.
Thank you. The next question is, the city of Plymouth has long sought to attract sit-down restaurants with limited success. Do you support continuing these efforts, and if so, how would you do so? We're going to start with Kim Nelson, and then Kathryn Chesnick.
Absolutely. I believe the health of a city is where you take your out-of-town guests for dinner. And I think there's an awful lot of families right now that have out-of-town guests that aren't dining in Plymouth. I would highly recommend everyone try our sit-down restaurants here in Plymouth. We have some awesome ones, so please make sure you explore the dining options here in Plymouth. Any restaurant owner can tell you, it's, it's, the restaurant business is a volatile one. A lot of restaurants fail. That doesn't mean that we shouldn't continue to try and attract sit-down restaurants here. So I would do everything possible to attract those types of businesses.
Thank you. Kathryn Chesnick.
Thank you. Yes, absolutely. I think restaurant shortages are, are, really harm the community within Plymouth. It's hard to have those communal gathering spaces where you're running into people you know, seeing your neighbors, and I think they're incredibly important. I think a big part of that will be the city center redevelopment 2.0, and creating attractions there. We need a core to develop there, and the city can do a lot to help create that with, you know, either splash pads, or, or little attractions, and also inviting our tourism board to help us scope what, what types of restaurants might succeed, and how do we go about attracting them and supporting them as much as possible.
Thank you. Next up is Craig Erkhart, and then Joel Spoonheim afterwards. Craig Erkhart.
Sure thing. I talked to many, many people around the city, and while, you know, public safety is obviously their first concern, people are always telling me, "Where do we go to get a bite to eat around here, right?" People in the south half of the city are going to Wayzata, people in the north half of the city are going up to Maple Grove. We need more sit-down places that people can gather, relax, and take the family out for a nice night. Now, look, to have more restaurants, we need more density, right? We need places where people can walk to the restaurant, go get ice cream, and ultimately, you know, enjoy the sights and the parks that we have around. I think our new city center is going to be a great place to have these, these new restaurants, and especially at the Prudential side, I know we're looking at putting at least two restaurants in there, and I think that'll be incredibly helpful for not only having our Plymouth residents, Plymouth residents having a place to go, but also for people from Maple Grove, Hamill, Medina, people from outside of our city coming to spend money in this great city of Plymouth. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, Joel Spoonheim.
Over 15 years ago, I spent time recruiting restaurants in my role as Economic Development Director for another city, and there's a very simple rule that restaurateurs follow. Restaurants follow rooftops. Where people live, restaurants follow. And we need more people along the major corridors. We need to take advantage of Highway 55 and the transformation it's going through to bring in housing along that corridor, and in other places that some of the older shopping areas, whether it's the Four Seasons Mall, or as we heard, Prudential, there are a number of places, and as we can bring in more housing, the restaurants will follow. I think we need to be realistic and practical, though. It's not something we can just wish for. We have to choose our future. We need to choose to welcome in change that will come, and to plan for it, and to encourage it, and to set up the zoning code and other things to invite developers to bring our dreams to fruition. So that's how we'll get there.
Thank you. Next up is going to be Shine Mahi, and then Julie Rich Schlefer will be next. Shine Mahi, Mahi?
So food, food is something in Indian culture is very important. It's a part of our life. Like, if somebody comes to your house, nobody is let go without making them eat something at your home. So, I mean, we make people, I mean, with food. So food really, I mean, makes people happy. You know, if your stomach is happy, you're happy, your brain is happy, your heart is happy. So, I mean, being a business owner of a food business, I mean, we struggled with during the COVID, but we tried to keep the business running, so we are still running it, but neighboring cities, so I'm not going to disclose where. But I would, I would love to bring my restaurant here. And just like the Thanksgiving is coming soon, and sometimes like bigger families don't have a place to sit down restaurant, to go sit somewhere in a restaurant and have a meal. So I totally agree with having restaurants here. Thank you.
Thank you. Julie Rich Schlefer.
So my neighbors and my family have wished for more restaurants near and around my home for the three decades that we've lived there. So most of the convenient restaurants are fast-food restaurants. I live in the Robbinsdale Area School District, which is the east part of Ward 3, and I sometimes feel like it's forgotten land, because all the development is west and south of where I live. So I think that there are some ideal places for there to be restaurants, and personally, local restaurants are where we often decide to go. Sunshine Factory is one of our favorite restaurants. It happens to be down the street. So I would encourage more restaurants, not just in the city center area, but in other parts of the city, because for me, driving to the city center is, is not really that convenient. It's almost more convenient for me to drive on the other side of the freeway.
Thank you very much. Next, we're going to hear from Scott Aldrich, and then Declan McCrory. Scott Aldrich.
Yeah, thank you. The first, when you hear someone say, "We need more restaurants," the first thing you should do is ask them, "What restaurants do you go to in Plymouth?" I think we need to encourage the mindset that you need to go to restaurants in Plymouth. Now, no offense to the other wards, but my ward has some of the best restaurants in Plymouth. We have the only Uzbeki restaurant from here to Chicago in Ward 3, Samar Khan. It's a great restaurant. I highly recommend you go. If you, like a quick lunch, you go to Dufner's. I mean, there, there is some, there are some really good restaurants, but I think what the problem is, is people will complain about the problem, but they never think about, "Oh, wait, I should start going to these places," and, you know, give them some business, so they stay in business, and the tables are full, so then that makes other restaurants open. I think it's a mindset thing that we need to market.
Thank you. Declan McCrory.
Well, as, I've got two kids who are five and three, so going to sit-down restaurants is a bit messy at the moment, but I do like a good meal made by someone else. Especially, yeah, just having a variety of restaurants would be important. I know we've got a lot of Indian places. There's a, I'm totally blanking on the name right now, but there's an excellent pizza place down the road on 55 from me and Scott.
Broadway Pizza.
No, it's a.
Latif's Pizza.
Yeah, there you go. Yeah, go there occasionally. I think, though, the issue with that one is, it's absolutely terrible to leave, turning left or right, and you can never really see who's coming, because it's right next to 55, so maybe, yeah, just that density construction, and making sure roads are safe for people to get around on.
Thank you. Armita Pilstrm.
Thank you, Patty. This is a, one that's very dear to my heart. I'm a business owner of Pilstrm Consulting Group, where we make brands and businesses a household name. Impossible Foods was our first client, so if you eat Impossible Burgers, think of my family. I worked with a lot of restaurants of getting that product on the menu. My burger was one of my first clients. It was right in my backyard. That's a, that's a business that started here in Plymouth. And when you think of that, for example, I serve on the Wayzata Chamber of Commerce, which is partnered with Plymouth and surrounding western suburbs, as well as Edina, and Minneapolis and St. Paul. Why do I do that? Because the heartbeat of who we are, the fabric, is really entrepreneurs. And I think if we could start partnering with some of these restaurant owners, when we think of the school boards, a lot of the kids that we have, they're asking us for the money to do what? Go spend it.
Thank you. This next question is a very long question, but the question part is at the very end. And this has been brought up several times, so I think people are ready for it. The redevelopment of the former Four Seasons Mall location near Highway 169 and Rockford Road has long been a topic of discussion in Plymouth. Although the former building has been demolished, residents near the site have, have been waiting years for this site to be redeveloped. The city of Plymouth was forced to relinquish a $775,000 grant from the Minnesota Department of Employment and Economic Development this past June, due to failure to meet certain terms of the development grant, as the project is on hold until the city identifies a new developer. Here's a question. What priority will you give this issue? And if you have specifics, please include specifics. And we're going to start first with Armita Pilstrm, and then Shine Mahi.
Thank you so much. I just want to say, and they will spend the money at the restaurants. Thank you. We had the pleasure and privilege to sit at our first council information session, to see them in action, right? And I was so blown away that I got in my car, and I said, "If I don't get elected, I'm just going to show up every day for free, just to learn more about how are they spending the money, and what are they doing?" I think the work that they're doing is remarkable, but I think the more we understand what they're doing with the grants, and what are some of the plans, what are some of the things that are coming forth from, we talked about a lot of the zoning, we talked about a lot of the infrastructure, things that we need to think about how we're going to allocate those funds. I think the first and foremost should be, that should be our first one. You talked about your area, living over there, so you know that more than anybody, that that's a priority.
Thank you. Thanks. Shine Mahi.
Lot of things are going on in the development area in Plymouth City, and Four Seasons Mall is one which was due for a long time. But there might be some real tight knots, which are not able to be solved, or, you know, unknotted, and there, there might be something really harder problems, which we don't expect, or which we are not, which we did not imagine. So I, I think our council members, and the city, and everybody, I believe in them, and they might be trying to resolve these, but if they are not able to do it, I do not blame them, or I, I appreciate that they are not stuck with that, but they're continuing to do the other developments, like the Prudential, where the Prudential location is there. So some might take too long to be solved, but having perseverance and patience is something what I believe in, so I, I'm expecting a good, good one.
Thank you. All right, next we'll hear from Scott Aldrich, and then Kim Nelson.
Yeah, so Four Seasons Mall is in my ward, Ward 3, and I've, I've knocked on hundreds of doors in that corner of Plymouth. Besides their first complaint, which is 36th is closed, and they have to go around to get there, their next complaint about the city is, the Four Seasons Mall has not been developed. And a lot of the people that I've talked to, they, I ask them, "What, what do you think we should do?", you know? And, you know, people have fears of, you know, too many people moving there because of traffic, but some of the ideas that I got from people was good, like, maybe it should be a blend of green space with some development, and, and maybe we partner with, you know, a development company to build something, you know? Reach out to companies that do development. I work for Mortensen, which has a huge development company, I mean, they spend millions a year, you know, millions every year on development partnerships. I don't know if anyone's reached out to them, but if I'm the council, I obviously would. Yeah, that's what I think we should do.
Thank you. Kim Nelson.
Yeah, I'd like to just note, it's not only the residents of Ward 3 that have noted the Four Seasons over the years, we certainly hear a lot about it in Ward 1 as well. However, when it comes to construction and development, there's a lot of variables and factors that go into whether a developer is able to build on a particular site, whether it's profitable for them, how costly it's going to be. Unfortunately, right now, there's a few little hurdles that I believe we need to overcome with that site, so whether it's an actual construction of a building there, or more green space, I think we need to have further conversations with the community on that. I think the one thing we can all say is that I think most residents in the city would like to see something done with that property.
Thank you. Next up. Thank you. Um, next up is going to be Ca- Craig Erkhart and then Declan McCrory afterwards. Craig Erkhart?
Thank you. The Four Seasons is something that is very near and dear to my heart. Like I said, I used to live right by there. As a matter of fact, it used to be the view from my bedroom window back when I lived in that part of town. Back then, it was just a old, broken down building. I never got to see it and it's, uh, and it's, it's full livelihood. But I knock in that neighborhood all the time because I feel a strong connection to the people that I used to be neighbors with. I went to National Night Out there and I was just knocking there last Friday, as a matter of fact. And I talked to this really nice fellow named David. And David has a nice young family and he said to me, he said, "You know, it'd be nice if we had somewhere where the community could gather, you know, somewhere where we could all get together, maybe a couple of fields, maybe a nice restaurant, something to bring the community together." You know, over there, unless you're crossing Rockford Road, there's not much that you can walk to in that community. Having something nice walking distance away where everybody can get together, play in the fields, maybe get a bite to eat, maybe a brewery. I don't think that'd be the worst thing in the world for the Four Seasons. Thanks.
Thank you. Um, Declan McCrory?
Yeah, so for the Four Seasons Mall, I mean, there's been talk up here about needing a hotel in the city. I've heard some chatter, um, this past year about the city needing a place to attract business meetings, meetings of conventions, that sort of thing. So that might be a priority, I think. And then, yeah, green space too, maybe. It is right next to 169, so something to soak up all the car pollution going by might be great. And then, yeah, just maybe housing if need be, but I think a meeting space might be a priority as well.
Thank you. Next up will be Catherine Chesnick and then Julie Ritz-Schlefer. Catherine Chesnick?
Thank you. Yeah, I have experience with the Four Seasons Mall because, um, it has come several times before the Bassett Creek watershed. It's a very challenging site. It has very poor soils and it's incredibly expensive to build anything large on. There's even concern that it might not hold a baseball field. So it's a, it's a challenge, a lot of, I think it's, there have been four different developments I've gone through. On the watershed, I've already worked to help, um, it to meet the water quality, um, uh, requirements. So that way, it will be more attractive for a developer. It is owned by the city now. And long story short, I think all options are on the table for Four Seasons. I think the highest and best use is, um, to try and do a mixed-use development like was originally planned. But given the incredible challenges on that site, um, I am, uh, as a council member, open to ideas.
Thank you. Uh, Julie Ritz-Schlefer?
So I have been paying very close attention to that space. I have watched, uh, kind of the roller coaster of projects that seem really exciting and they're, they're being approved to disappearing. And I was extremely disappointed when I saw the loss of that grant. And I will be honest, that was one of the reasons why I decided I was going to run. I think that is a beautiful space. I don't necessarily think we need more green space in that area, although a development that would include some green space was, would be wonderful. Because if you walk a half a block into the neighborhood, you'll see that a lot of the neighborhoods have built-in green spaces in our area. It is one of the most beautiful places to live. I also think that, um, we need to increase our residents in the area so that we can increase enrollment potentially in the schools. Strong schools make strong neighborhoods, helps increase house values. So I just think that we need to have more effort on trying to get that really perfect thing there.
Thank you so much. Uh, next up is Joel Spoonheim.
You know, I want to acknowledge the frustration of the neighbors. And I also want to ask that we all thank the council that chose to take down a very belited, crime-attracting, empty facility and clear the site to at least restore our dignity with what's there. I also want to ask that we all recognize that it is a wetland. And while something might have gotten by 50 years ago, our taxpayer dollars, based on the four developments that have been brought forward, our taxes would all go up if we were to try to get any of those done because the amount of subsidy required today is exorbitant. And I think our council has made a very prudent decision to not bring those developments forward because all of our taxes would have to go up. And it still might not achieve our dreams. So I think we can expect to see that site redevelop, but it may not be next year. And it may not be the year after. And so what we need to do as a community is think about how to keep that space useful for kids to play in or whatever over the coming years.
Thank you very much. Um, next question. What matters of public safety, if any, do you believe require change in city policy, ordinance, or funding, such as police recruitment and retention? Uh, first up, we're going to have Joel Spoonheim and then Declan McCrory. Joel Spoonheim?
Oh, first, I just got to say Chief Fadden and the department do a great job. And our firefighters do a great job. I've unfortunately had to have them come to my own house and have appreciated how quickly they got there. So let's start with the fact that I think we're doing really great on this front. And I don't know that change is needed because the community is working quite well. And we need to continue to maintain this incredible relationship with our officers who are getting out in the community, who are in our neighborhoods, who are coming to gatherings and have made themselves available to meet with students and scouts and building those relationships. So I, I am, I actually am concerned that people think that there's a huge problem because there isn't. What we do need to do is also respect and appreciate Chief Fadden for his persistent training of our public safety officers. Because our community is changing. And as it changes, our public safety officers need to know how to encounter these different situations and be engaged in a way that keeps themselves and the public safe.
Thank you. Uh, Declan McCrory?
I too will echo. I really liked hearing how much our police get trained on various situations. Though I can't really say much about the police. I never really see them where I live, unless someone across the street's having a medical emergency, unfortunately for them. Though I think many of us appear received an email about Fire Station One being closed. So I guess that would be a priority, making sure we've got enough people to staff that. So our Ward Three can have a quick response for fire emergencies and other emergencies. And then, uh, road safety, uh, Pine View Lane, uh, does attract some very fast drivers sometimes, uh, Sunset Trail as well. So speed bumps, anything that maybe would slow people down and, uh, not hit people would be great. And then crosswalks too, I notice.
Thank you. Um, Julie, uh, first, we're going to have, uh, Julie Ritz-Schlefer and then Armita Pilstrm. Julie Ritz-Schlefer?
So, safety is obviously something that we're all concerned about. I do think that Plymouth does an excellent job of maintaining, uh, a safe community. I, I'm not sure, though, if some of you are aware that, you know, there is, uh, I believe a partnership with the schools. And if you live in the Robbinsdale area schools, there's a referendum that will be on the ballot that is in part to be used for safety measures. So just keeping in mind that in the event that that doesn't pass, they will potentially need some assistance. And so, um, I would encourage that we, uh, offer resources to schools that might need that for safety. I also want to add that, um, I am very pleased to see the improvement and re- uh, recreation of that beautiful Fire Station Two. And it did sound like that we could recruit more, uh, people to, to staff that other station.
Um, next, Armita Pilstrm.
Thank you, Patty. Police, wow. Um, that's a, that's one that's real close. I don't think that we really understand the day in and life, what a police officer go through. They want to go home just like us. And I think that it's a shame that we have made it where it's a us or them. It should be, we are the people. They are out there serving and protecting us. And so I too, um, stand in agreement that whatever they need, we need to be saying yes. And what else can we do to keep them safe, that they can go home to their wives and their childrens and in the communities that we serve? I don't have, um, something that I come out my house and I feel like I can't be safe when I run. I see the police in my area all the time and in surrounding areas.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, next up is Scott Aldrich and then Craig Erkhart. Scott Aldrich?
Yeah, I've been in Plymouth 11 years and I think public safety's done a great job. It wasn't until I started knocking doors that I found out people had some issues with that, uh, which was a surprise. So I think we should try to figure that out, if that does actually exist. But I do know that Chief Fadden was saying the other day that he has 82 authorized positions and he only has 73 filled. So we have nine vacancies looking to hire, uh, which, so maybe we figure out how to recruit a little better if we can. But I do know, he also mentioned that they'll train people. If you have a two-year degree in anything, they'll bring you in, pay for your training, um, which I think is a great idea. But I think it's just brainstorming and thinking of other ways to recruit those other nine, uh, open positions. Thank you.
Craig Erkhart?
Thank you. As I've said, public safety, number one issue of mine. And I believe that Plymouth has first-class first responders, especially our police department. And we, as a city council, as residents of Plymouth, need to do all we can to support them. As Scott mentioned, retention and recruitment is down for our police officers. And we see that across the board, across not just Plymouth, the metro, the state, the country. And to play off Armita's point, I think, uh, I think it is really, really tragic that it has become almost a dividing issue because those are the people who are putting their lives on the line to make us safe, to keep us safe, to patrol our neighborhoods. And you know, a lot of this involves just listening too. Because as I said previously, safety means a lot of things to a lot of different areas around Plymouth, whether it be speeding, whether it be break-ins, whether it be car issues. There's a lot of things that we need to address, but first and foremost, it involves supporting our first responders, including our police officers.
Thank you. Um, next up is Kim Nelson and then Shyne Mahi. Nelson?
Thank you. Um, Plymouth has a world-class, top-notch public safety department. I'd like to just publicly thank Chief Fadden and also Chief Kappa. They have very difficult jobs to do. I am firmly committed to providing our public safety department with all the resources that they need to do their job. When it comes to retention and recruitment, there's a couple of things. First, I'd love to build a new fire station, but we can't staff it. We can't staff it right now. And why is that? I think there's a few things. Um, first and foremost, wages and benefits. I know the city's been working on it, but right now, we're at 75% of our peer cities. So we can do better. We can do better on that if we want to keep people here, uh, in the city. And then finally, um, let's make it easier on our officers, not having to, uh, let's reduce the amount of accidents that happen. Because mentally, that takes a toll on our law enforcement and our, our first responders. So I want to do what we can as a city to reduce those.
Now, we're at Shyne Mahi.
Our policing and our fire departments are really awesome in Plymouth and they're top-notch. And, um, they're doing a great job. And I do love other, um, not just the policing, what other services they are providing, like the Citizens Academy. Like, you know, I'm, I, I graduated from Citizens Academy like a few years ago. And it teaches and you know to learn like what exactly they do and what all they go through and how hard they get trained and how they have to make their decisions. And, uh, the other thing, the Explorers, which is a great one, which if you encourage your kids to go into the Explorers, many kids, um, I mean, my, both my kids went through that program. And my, uh, younger one is right now, he's the captain of Explorers, uh, team. And they do understand, like, uh, it could be a career too and they could get the, um, I mean, uh, um, college funding and, um, for the college. Thank you.
Uh, Catherine Chesnick?
Thank you. Yeah, public safety is near and dear to my heart. Um, I am, have emergency management experience, have responded to hurricanes and, um, uh, was a, uh, wildland firefighter. And one of the things that I really look at right now for both police recruitment and retention and fire is the changes that are happening in the industry. And one of the things that, um, I've worked with on, on council with Chief Fadden is helping to bring on a, a social worker so that they have that as a resource when they need a different type of response, they can have that available. The, the, uh, our public safety crew is amazing, but we are understaffed. And I fully support getting them up to a full staffing level and ensuring that their morale can mar- uh, remain high and that they feel appreciated.
Thank you. Uh, this next question is a yes/no question, but then explain, please. So, um, Plymouth has lower residential ta- uh, residential property taxes when compared to most cities. Would you support increasing our property taxes to achieve some expansion of city services? And if so, what services or activities would you expand or add? If not, please explain why. First, we're going to hear from Scott Aldrich and then Catherine Chesnick.
My, my answer off the bat would be no, because I don't know what specific services you're looking to add. So if I was to add taxes to people's bills every year, I would want to understand what it is and if it's providing value. So off the bat, my answer is no.
Thank you. Catherine Chesnick?
Uh, thank you. Yeah, um, my answer, again, also off the bat is no. We are very fortunate that we have such a, a thriving business sector and that helps keep our property taxes low. So, and, uh, and that's a goal of mine, is to keep ours, our property taxes low. And, and part of that is supporting our thriving, um, business centers. And in terms of services to expand, I do think, um, creating a city center will be expensive and that we do need to look at that. But I think, um, working with our finance director, Andrea Rich, we have a lot of different types of, um, ways to pay for it, including grants and partnerships and a lot of other, um, financial tools in their financial stacking to tackle some of those challenges.
Thank you. Next up, we have, uh, Declan McCrory and then Shyne Mahi. Declan McCrory?
Well, I, I don't think anyone is going to say, "Yeah, I'll raise taxes", so. I don't know what programs Plymouth would need that it doesn't already have, besides maybe a social worker. But I think when I was looking at the budget thing, it's already well-planned out, so it's not going to add anything to it. Yeah, I don't know. I don't know what else we would need. That would really be a question of, what kind of programs do we need then?
Thank you. Uh, next up, we have Shyne Mahi and then Kim Nelson. Shyne Mahi?
You know, this is a question I think I rather, I don't know how to answer and I don't answer to unless I have more details why we want to raise the taxes and what are we are achieving and what is the main purpose. You know, some certain things, if there is an emergency reason, we need more funding, yes, I would say. But if there is something which is not really very important for Plymouth City or the city residents, then I would say no. So I need further details of it. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, Kim Nelson?
I'm going to echo what Councilmember Chesnick in that, uh, we need, just need to ensure that our commercial industrial base stays high between 33 and 36%, so we can keep residential, uh, taxes low. We have an extremely talented city manager and extremely talented, uh, financial director here. Our city's been very smart with our money. We are really, um, uh, you know, known for our good financials here. And so, uh, no, not at this point. The other thing, as I want to say, I have faith in Plymouth residents. Every time this community has needed something, every time the school districts have needed something, the citizens have stepped up and passed a referendum. So I'm going to leave that in the hands of the voters on whether they want to add a new amenity or something like that.
Thank you. Next, we're going to hear from Craig Erkhart and then Julie Ritz-Schlefer. Craig Erkhart?
Should we raise property taxes in Plymouth? Absolutely not. Absolutely not. I would say probably every third door I knock on, I ask them, "What's your number one issue?" So many people tell me, "Did you see how much our property tax went up this year?" And I know most of that's happened in County, but a big reason why a lot of people move to this great city of Plymouth is our taxes are the lowest in the western suburbs. And I absolutely believe that we should keep it that way. We have more developments coming in with more housing, more businesses. That'll supplement a lot of the costs that we need for the future. But overall, I think we should err on the side of fiscal responsibility and not raising taxes.
Thank you. Uh, Julie Ritz-Schlefer?
Thank you. Um, I don't think anyone in this room wants their property taxes to go up, but if you would notice, they do go up every year. So, uh, it might not, the percentage might change, but if you look at your tax bill, you're going to notice that you, whether we're saying we're not raising them or not, they are going up every year. So with that said, what can we use that extra money for? Well, one of the things I would like to see is access to our trailways all year round. It's one of the things that we promote the city on, all these beautiful green spaces and trailways, but they're not plowed in the wintertime. And I feel like that is something that could really enhance the quality of life of people in Plymouth, if they were able to access those and weren't stuck walking on the street all winter long. So, uh, I do think that perhaps there are some other ways that we can raise revenue, uh, a- as I think, uh, one of the other candidates had mentioned, whether it's seeking private investment or potentially grants or some other opportunities.
Thank you. Um, Armita Pilstrum and then Joel Spoonheim. Armita Pilstrum?
Thank you. One thing I ask Santa Claus every year is not to raise my property tax. So I am going to stand united. Good job, candidates. We're all saying no. Okay? Well, I, I always say what I'm not good at, I'm married, I have a CPA as a husband, and I know for a fact that he would say no too. So I'm going to stand with him. We're not going to do that. But I would say that it is a, it is a privilege to see your property going up because in some surrounding suburbs, it is not so. And I, I want us to just take some pride that we do live in Plymouth and it is going up. Um, but it's going up for a good cause and we need to support, uh, the work that they're doing and making those kind of decisions. But I would say no. Thank you.
Thank you. Joel Spoonheim?
No. I've run a multimillion-dollar business for many years and every time we want to add a new service, we first say, what do we need to stop? What do we need to modernize to become more efficient? And only then, after we find the savings, do we lean in to figure out how do we add something? And we have to do that because costs do go up, supplies go up, things go up. But we don't, in business, get the liberty of just jacking up prices. So I'm going to bring that kind of common sense attitude to city government, um, because I think that's the way we need to think about these tough decisions. Doesn't mean I'm against new services, absolutely not. You can't grow if you're not changing. But I think we can continue to do what the city has done by creating great parks and, and great services while still managing the second lowest or lowest tax rate in the region, which is a huge accomplishment that I'm committed to sustaining.
Thank you. All right, next question. What are your thoughts on the inclusionary housing policy recently adopted by the city council that focuses on providing financial assistance? What additional measure, measures would you support, if any, to address housing needs in Plymouth? We're going to start first with Shyne Mahi and then Julie Rich Schlefer. Shyne Mahi?
I think Plymouth is, uh, doing great with the housing, affordable housing and, uh, um, we are, um, list is there where we are trying to help the people who are looking for the housing. And there are plenty of plans and they are including how to build new houses and affordable, um, to new house owners and the new home, uh, young families to come in, in Plymouth and also to accommodate the seniors who are, um, struggling with their huge houses and who want to move into, uh, assisted living and other kind of housing. So I, I think Plymouth is doing great. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Julie Rich Schlefer?
Well, I think that Plymouth, uh, over the years has potentially become a place that is less affordable to live. And not that I don't want my house value to go up. Um, I wonder if I, uh, when I, considering the price I purchased my house and how much my house is worth now, if I would ever be able to afford the down payment. Uh, so affordability is certainly something that if we could have more affordable housing, you would certainly appear, it'd be more inclusive. I also think that, again, um, being inclusive means having also other things here that would draw people from diverse backgrounds. And that is probably going to fall on what type of businesses we have and services that we have for everyone here in Plymouth, if you want to be able to attract, uh, a more diverse population.
Thank you. Next up, Scott Aldrich and then Craig Erkhardt. Scott Aldrich?
Yeah, I mean, I, I think the, you know, the purpose of the inclusionary housing policy is to encourage that low to moderate income households to live in Plymouth. Now Plymouth's been a well-run city for decades, and so that means that people want to live here. So you're, we're continuously going to have this pressure of people wanting to live here. I mean, I think it's, it's a battle that's always going to exist in Plymouth. You know, our vacancy rates, I think, are less than 3% or around 3%. If you're anything below 5%, that's putting pressure on your, your rental prices. And, you know, being that we're such a desirable city to live in, I, I don't know if we can really solve it through the market. So I think that was the purpose of it, was to, uh, you know, forcefully create low to moderate income housing. Thank you.
Thank you. Craig Erkhardt?
Thank you. This is a, uh, very personal issue for me. I was lucky enough to, uh, purchase my first home several years ago in Plymouth. And to get a house in Plymouth, I had to ask, I had to offer way over asking and I had to sign basically that day to get this place. It is madness out there for people trying to get in. And you can understand it too. We all live in a wonderful community. We have great schools, we have great parks, and we have a safe place to live, great place to raise your family. So in terms of the inclusionary housing policy, I would encourage as much workforce housing as we possibly can. I think it's critical that we can have teachers and nurses and anyone who wants to contribute to our society to have a nice place to live, especially in this great city of Plymouth.
Thank you. Next up, Katherine Chesnick and then Joel Spoonheim. Katherine Chesnick?
Thank you. Yeah, I do, um, I voted for the inclusionary housing policy on council and I, I think it is a great, um, tool. I did vote for it to be a policy and not an ordinance, because I do think, um, policies are more flexible, ordinances can be very sticky and can sometimes backfire. So I, I do support ways to keep, um, Plymouthians, Plymouth residents here and, um, and so they can age here and continue to grow out the housing market that is so desperately needed in the metro area. Um, and also help, um, families that are struggling with rising costs. But I do think that needs to be done carefully and intentionally, um, in a way that preserves what we have while expanding our offerings to others as well.
Thank you. Uh, Joel, next up Joel Spoonheim and then, uh, Declan McCrory. Joel Spoonheim?
I not only support the inclusionary housing policy, I helped write it. And as a housing commissioner, I voted for its adoption and referral to the city council. And I invested over two years of my volunteer life advancing that work because, I want to be clear what affordable housing is. If you're a single person that earns less than $70,000 a year, or if you're a family of four earning less than $100,000 a year, you qualify for affordable housing. And if we say we want more restaurants, if we say we want more businesses, and if we listen to our existing businesses, we are struggling to find employees for many of our businesses that have entry-level workers. So affordable housing is part of achieving our goals as a community, which is why I was, am a proponent of affordable housing. Now, we're leaving money on the table, and so part of the solution that I'll continue to work on is centralizing our excess resources into a housing fund so that we can help fund the investment in affordable housing. We have excess tick, districts, and we also will remove the barriers of our zoning code to attract development.
Uh, next up, Armita Pilstrum and then Kim Nelson. Armita, oh, I'm sorry, Declan. Declan, this is the second time. I'm so sorry. I have to pay better attention to what I'm doing here. Uh, Declan McCrory?
I am fully in support of inclusionary housing. As someone who only got a house in Plymouth through the assistance of generational wealth through my parents, I, I wouldn't be living here without that help. Um, so, yeah, just seeing other people being able to live in this excellent city with, I guess, assistance from the city would be great for us to have. And then I work through disadvantaged, uh, populations who frequently struggle to find housing because of their, uh, brain injuries. So anything that helps with housing is, is great.
Thank you. Um, Armita Pilstrum and then Kim Nelson. Armita?
Yes, thank you, Patty. I stand before you as a previous 16-year-old high school dropout. I am originally from Chicago, Illinois. I came to, uh, Minnesota with a garbage bag on my back and $67 to make a difference in my life. I went from a four-year degree to a master's degree. And it's important for you to understand that in order for my husband and I to buy our first home, I was a receptionist and we were only making 70,000 total. And my husband was going to school. So we did receive the 25,000 down to buy our first home. When I told you I love the city of Plymouth, I didn't just say it, I mean it. I am a homeowner because of the city of Plymouth. And so when we, when the council makes decisions and they say, hey, we're going to put this and implement it, who does that impact? I am the person that you have changed a life for. So I agree that we keep this going. Thank you.
Kim Nelson?
Yeah, um, first of all, I did vote for the inclusionary housing as policy for the same reasons as Councilmember Chesnick did. Um, once again, my background is in government affairs for North Central State's Regional Council of Carpenters. They loved building things and they, so I, I understand this world. I also held a real estate degree for a number of years, so I understand home values, I understand housing and all of that. Um, this is an area where we have to get innovative. Um, I truly believe that if we were to address all of our housing concerns, we really need to think outside the box and not do things as we've normally done in the past. I think I calculated it once that if we wanted to hit our affordable housing numbers, even if we took the best example in the metro, which is Bloomington, we would have to build 71 high-density buildings. That's not going to happen here. It's not going to happen. So we really, one thing I'm committed to is, um, once I'm real, once I'm elected, is to reach out to my colleagues around the nation to find innovative ideas.
Um, let's go to the next question. Uh, what role, and I'm not sure this, is this going to be our last question? Yeah, this will be our last question. Um, what role do the arts play in a healthy community? And how would you approach funding for the arts in our community? Um, first, we're going to go to Armita Pilstrum and then Craig Erkhardt.
I always really hope you would go with somebody else. I don't even know how to sing. So, no, sorry, for the arts. No, I, I would go back to, um, Hello Plymouth. Remember, that's a new thing that we are starting here in the city of Plymouth for travel, uh, tourism and leisure. That will be huge from an arts perspective. Business can, can tie into entertainment. Um, one thing your family had done was the, the music for Plymouth. You guys done an amazing job for that. So we can really make sure that we keep that going for generations to come. But that would be mine. Thank you.
Thank you. Craig Erkhardt?
Art makes life beautiful, whether it be in form of music, theater, or just flat-out painting a picture. And truthfully, with all the, with all the, uh, you know, extracurricular activities we have around Plymouth with our fairs, our music in Plymouth, and, uh, you know, just, just random festivals that we put on, I think it's critical that we, you know, as, as Plymouth residents, encourage people to make beautiful art, you know, to, to show what our culture is right now and to build lasting, sustaining pieces of art that can help make our city more beautiful for generations to come. Thanks.
Thank you. Uh, next up is going to be Joel Spoonheim and then Declan McCrory. Joel Spoonheim?
You know, art is what brings us together. I had so much fun at the Hilli Center this summer, going to concerts, including Music in Plymouth with 10,000 of my friends from Plymouth, hopefully many of you, where we got to sit and listen to Minnesota Orchestra and bands and watch fireworks. You also just need to pop over to the Millennium Garden, which is another form of art. It's a garden and it's in so much demand, you can see a wedding there pretty much anytime you want, if you are a wedding crasher, because it's beautiful. Again, art. And now we're looking at how we're choosing to upgrade our streets and to make our city not look like every other suburb. It's the art that makes us look and feel a little bit different. And so as we choose these decisions of our parks and our artwork and our community events, it's what's going to bring us together. It's what's going to make us remember and see and show others how we're different. And so art's important. Let's keep creating it and let's keep celebrating it.
Thank you. Declan McCrory?
Yeah, so I think I went to nearly every concert at the Plymouth City Center this year. Um, tried to do that a lot, especially with the kids, get them exposed to a lot of different kinds of musics. Millennium Garden is beautiful, that's too well. And then just the, the playgrounds we have around the city can also be a focus for art. Some kids would like to climb on it. You never know. Uh, and then running, I run a lot, uh, just around the southeast part of the city right now. Um, I think we could probably, I don't know how well it worked for other parts of the city, but maybe we could open up parts of the city to have murals and just have artists come in and paint parts of buildings or parts of our trails that, like, go in under 55 on the loose line or the tunnels. Just make that more beautiful to look at than gray concrete. It'd be nice.
Thank you. Um, next Katherine Chesnick and then Julie Rich Schlefer. Katherine Chesnick?
Thank you. I think the arts are incredibly important and they can really help create a community or, or break a community, um, in terms of the type of art we put in and what kind of messages are we sending about inclusion and about, um, what our values are as a community. Um, so a good friend of mine is a curator and who has commissioned many murals and decorated many spaces. And it's incredible what can be done within skilled hands, creating and compiling artwork in terms of creating community. Um, the, supporting the music in Plymouth and other offerings at the Hilli Center are, that obviously brings folks together. And we have a lot of folks here to be thankful for on that, and I do thank them. It's incredible what they've done. Um, I'd also say creating art is very important. Um, and I was recently, um, I serve as liaison to the Parks and Rec Advisory Committee and we just passed a, um, thank you, an updated policy.
Julie Rich Schlefer?
So my involvement in music and art, uh, has really been life-sustaining. I played piano as a young child. I have a son who graduated from Armstrong and he's a saxophonist, a classical saxophonist, and a music educator. So extremely important what art brings to the community and to our students at schools. Um, I think the, uh, Fourth of July Music in Plymouth event is phenomenal, unlike probably any other. Bringing the Minnesota Orchestra to the community, one of the best orchestras in the entire country, having the opportunity to, to watch them and, and enjoy them for free. Um, it's really important. But one thing that nobody's really touched on is how are we going to continue to fund any expansion that we're doing? And I would say it would probably be, need to be seeking maybe grants and then private philanthropy.
Uh, next up we'll do Kim Nelson and then Scott Aldrich. Kim Nelson?
Yeah, I strongly believe art is, goes to the core of our humanity and what makes us human. Um, you know, um, one of the first things we do as infants is learn music and one of the last things we remember, uh, before we pass on is music. Um, I'm a self-professed band geek, I'm a saxophonist as well. Um, first chair, Allstate Iowa, yay. Um, I also have a niece that is, has become an, uh, theater kid and I have a strong belief that theater kids will rule the world because they've learned how to put down their cell phones and, uh, communicate face-to-face. So go theater kids. Um, but when we look at community, uh, art connects community, um, not only in times of joy, but, um, uh, hopefully we never need it in times of grief. The arts community can be extremely important. So I would support any type of way to keep communities connected, um, through the arts. And I believe as a council, we should focus on it because what you focus on comes to fruition.
Thank you. Scott Aldrich?
Yeah, I'd agree with a lot of the candidates here as far as Plymouth has done a good job with, you know, the programs that are out there right now with the arts. Arts, to me, is really capitalizing on people's creativities. And I'd be curious to hear what ideas people have about funding more of the arts around town. I like things that are beautiful, like when you're in your house, you can make, you can just switch up one little picture, that makes the room a little more beautiful. And then later, you do another switch. You put a pot in there, it looks a little more beautiful. I like continuously enhancing, like, kind of like at your house, I would love to do that with the city to make the city more beautiful. Thank you.
Thank you. Shyne Mahi?
Art is something everybody in life needed to have appreciation, because that is what keeps us going as a community together. I, as a physician, I believe that art is something very important for behavioral and emotional health. It helps people to come together. It is the, art is a language of everybody. Like, there is like no cultural difference or country difference or different language. Everybody can understand the art language. And even a small piece of chalk, sidewalk art, can make people to stop and look at it and appreciate it. You know, it fills your heart with joy and the kid will be jumping around. My son is in the chamber of concert choir at school. And he has made this group of kids together, like, they are together for the last couple of years. Thanks.
Thanks. And guess what? We have time for one more question. If there's an issue that wasn't discussed in tonight's forum that you wish to address, please let us know. We're gonna start with Joel Spoonheim first and then Julie Ritz-Schlefer.
Well, that's surprising.
Throwing an audible.
You know, I love living here. And I think the thing I'd like to just say is that over twenty-five, thirty years, I've been working with communities across the country. And I've had the privilege to help communities achieve their dreams of becoming healthier, more vibrant, to do economic development. And through that time, I've also learned that the only way for that to happen is if we choose to listen to each other and to care about each other and to care about creating something better. I've built those partnerships. I will continue to build those partnerships if you instill your trust in me. And I thank you for the chance to be here.
Thank you. Julie Ritz-Schlefer?
Well, I think we've probably highlighted what would be viewed as the most important things. But I don't think anyone's really completely addressed expansion of climate-friendly ways to connect our neighborhoods. I think it's something the city's working on, whether it's more trails or pathways or improving pedestrian walkways that maybe might be unsafe, especially in and around our schools, as they, as I know along Thirty-S sixth Avenue, there's a project that's going to be going forward that I think is specifically designed to help with safety, traffic safety along that street, which is within a mile of where I live. So, something that I would certainly support if we were able to fund it.
Great. Next up, Declan McCrory and then Catherine Chesnick.
I think the only thing that's coming to mind is I'd probably try to encourage, I know we got the fantastic night to unite in a lot of our neighborhoods, but maybe, it's only one day a year. I know Minnesotans don't like to interact with new people, but and maybe encouraging the city to have more nights like that throughout the year. And just getting to know your neighbors more, that really helps with a lot of things.
Thank you. Catherine Chesnick?
Thank you. Yeah, and I appreciate this time. One issue that hasn't come up yet is Medicine Lake. As watershed commissioner and a person who recreates on Medicine Lake regularly, there are several aquatic invasive species that are harming the lake's ecosystem and harming our ability to recreate on the lake. One of the worst offenders is starry stonewort. It is an algae that can basically fill up the lake and turn it into a swamp. So, one goal I have on council that I'm working on now and will continue to work on is to get the three organizations, actually, in four if you count, Three Rivers Park District, to work together to better organize, to help the lake and help the city work more efficiently with those organizations. And once that partnership structure is established, that can work to help all lakes in Plymouth. And that's how I roll, is really making a policy.
Armita Pilstrm and then Kim Nelson. Armita?
Yeah, I'm just gonna have everybody, just take a moment and look around the room. Just look around. This is our city. These are your neighbors. We don't need a town hall. We don't need a night out for you to take time to get to know somebody. I echo what you said. Because it's like back in the Andy Griffin days, everybody knew everybody. Let's bring that back. And also, I would say for all of us, you know, at the end, give these people a hand, because it takes courage to do this. You're coming out of your comfort zone, but more than anything, you're coming out saying that I wanna make this a better place. So, for me, I think what I didn't hear was, as you look around, they're getting rid of a lot of DEI programs. But what is DEI? Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion. Let's make Plymouth really be that quality of life neighborhoods where we represent where we are at.
Kim Nelson?
Yeah, the one thing I do wanna address is just that, because I have this public forum, one of the biggest concerns, I think, of constituents in my ward is intersections and speed. So, I'm gonna take this moment to put out a public plea to everyone in Plymouth to please slow down, follow the posted speed limits, and watch out for your neighbors. I'm doing work here on my end at the city council. I know Chief Fadden's doing his work. But just everybody be conscious, we're all neighbors and we wanna protect one another.
Thank you. Next up, Scott Aldrich and then Shyne Mahi. Scott Aldrich?
Yeah, this might be more of an observation than an issue, but a few months back, Jim Davis had stepped down from city council, and I applied to be appointed. And in my appointment, they ask you if you're gonna run for council or not. And I, in the fall, and I said, yeah, I'm gonna run as well. And they said, well, we only want it to be a temporary person to serve the city during that time and not run in the fall. So, you're essentially disqualified. And I'm paraphrasing the conversation. So, I didn't get put up for appointment. And then it clicked. We had a, we had a meeting on Tuesday where all the candidates were there. And I realized that two of the candidates were appointed to city council. And I was kinda wondering, why is that allowed? And that's more just an observation. Thank you.
Next up, Shyne Mahi?
You know, since we started this meeting, all we were doing like is what we want to do to you or to the city or how we want to do the things for the city. But I wanted to take this opportunity to ask, like, what you want us to do for you or how we can help you and what we can do to make the city better than what it is. I mean, Plymouth is awesome. That's why I'm living here for the past eighteen years. And I couldn't ask anything more than what Plymouth is already offering. And some of the colleagues here sitting by me are already doing their job, keeping the Plymouth City. And the rest of the council and the employees are doing great. But what else we could do? Thank you.
Thank you. And finally, Craig Erkhart?
Thanks Patty. Good question. I like it a lot. And you know, this has been mentioned quite a few times, but I think it's worth noting again. Plymouth has done so much rapid expansion in the past sixty years that we are nearly built out now. And while we still have maintained a lot of beautiful parks, trails, and green spaces, I personally believe that we can do more to expand these areas. I live in an older neighborhood. I have hundred-plus-year-old trees. And it breaks my heart every time I see a new development go in and tear down these beautiful trees. I think we should do all we can as a city council and as Plymouth residents overall to make these green spaces beautiful, accessible, and sustaining forever to come. Thank you.
Thank you. Now, we're, I will call on you for your closing statements. You have two minutes for your closing statements. And first, we're going to have Catherine Chesnick and then Armita Pilstrm.
Thank you very much. And I wanna just take the moment to thank the League of Women Voters for putting this on. This is an incredible resource to the community to see what candidates' values are. And what I would encourage voters to do is to look and see who is doing the work. There are several folks here who have put in incredible amounts of time and energy into this. And what are their motivations? You know, recently, the last sixty, sixty acres of Plymouth farmland was given away to a Texas-based megachurch without a fight at all. Are we looking at more decisions like that? Potentially, yes. If we vote for, you know, the mayor's endorsed candidates, unfortunately. That, those kind of decisions harm Plymouth and cost us all fortune in taxpayer dollars. So, look at the folks who are here to do the work. Councilmember Nelson, I'm a double commissioner and councilmember. Councilmember Spoonheim, we have the experience. And I really encourage you to do your homework, look at voter, look at our track records and what we stand for and what we do with our time.
Thank you. Armita Pilstrm?
I was gonna read from my phone, but I'm just gonna do it from my heart. I haven't served on the council before. But that doesn't mean that I'm not qualified to represent the city of Plymouth. I've been here for twenty-two years. I wanna just serve. I could've been endorsed by anybody, and I turned both parties down because I believe local government should be nonpartisan. My cares, my views, is what you want me to do in this seat. As a wife of twenty-eight years, I am committed. As a mother to Isaiah, twenty-six years old, I am there, that is my beloved son. And I will retire and still be in the city of Plymouth. I ask for your vote on November fifth. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, Declan McCrory and then Craig Erkhart. Declan McCrory?
Well, like everyone else up here, I really enjoy living in Plymouth. And, well, with my current job, I've learned a lot of skills in making people communicate with each other. Patience has been something I've learned my whole life and just working as a team. And I would hope to bring that skill set to this city council. I know I don't have any previous government experience, but talking with people and more important, I think, listening to people has been something I have done for a very long time. So, thank you.
Thank you. Craig Erkhart?
When I was a younger man, I used to drive through the city of Plymouth. And I used to see those signs that said Plymouth, best place to live. I believe it was Money Magazine, 2010. And I thought to myself, well, that's gotta be the place to be. So, as soon as I graduated from college, I moved straight to the city of Plymouth. I now work here. And as I've said before, I truly believe that Plymouth is an exceptional community. And for that reason, I'll be a longtime resident. The reason I'm running is because I wanna see it be built for the future, be built for our future residents, and ultimately be the best city to live in, in the state of Minnesota. As city councillor, there are three questions I'm gonna ask every single time a major issue comes about. The first, does this make us more or less safe? Second, are we being fiscally responsible in this decision? And third, how does that impact our environment? My name is Craig Erkhart, running for Plymouth City Council at large. I truly hope to earn your support. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next up, Joel Spoonheim and then Julie Ritz-Schlefer. Joel Spoonheim?
Thanks, everyone who's here tonight and who will be watching this on livestream or after the fact. Appreciate you participating in democracy. I'm running to continue my years as a servant leader and to serve you. I've worked for decades, both as a volunteer and professionally, to improve communities. And I've been successful by listening and learning and building partnerships. My record of service is why two different city councils in Plymouth appointed me to commissions. My record of service is why community leaders are endorsing me for this campaign. I believe that with focus and determination, we can actually achieve our residents' goals of more housing that's affordable, of new local restaurants and businesses. And we can support our business community with simpler regulations to encourage investment. We can do this while also keeping taxes low and being a caring community. When I launched my campaign, I wrote down my commitment, and it's on my website. And I wanna share a few thoughts with you. Because as I look at the future, the only thing we know is change is the only constant. But we can guide that change through civil conversation and seeking to understand each other. We're not all gonna agree, but we can be respectful. And so, as your council member, I promise to prepare Plymouth for the future with your input. I promise to be a welcoming and inclusive leader, to support public safety that serves everyone, to protect our water and natural resources, to lead competently, to keep government efficient, and to nurture democracy through civil discourse. My name's Joel Spoonheim. I'm running to be your city council member at large, and I ask for your vote.
Thank you. Julie Ritz-Schlefer?
I love the city that I have lived in for thirty-one years and would be honored to serve the residents of Ward Three. You know, over the years, my family has spent a lot of time at Caribou Coffee on Rockford Road by Cub Grocery. This has allowed me to get to know the people who work there, and I am so grateful for their partnership and support of various causes. But even more impactful than their generosity is something said by one of my favorite baristas, Nate. Since I know him by name and I recognize his voice, when I drive up, I, to place my order, I don't just say hello, but I ask him how he's doing. And without missing a beat, his immediate response is, well, you know, live in the dream. Just live in the dream. Well, maybe you know somebody that is like this. I've only known a few people that would give that kind of response with such passion and conviction. And when you hear it, it gives you pause, and then you smile big, and you feel the joy and gratitude that this person has in reflecting on his life. Just three little words. His response can positively change your entire day, and if you let it, your perspective on life. In conclusion, I wanna thank everyone for being here and for watching at home. I hope to be the change that makes the city of Plymouth even greater. Let me be your voice as we build community engagement, enhance safety, especially in and around our schools, and improve accessibility to our green spaces and trailways all year round, while continuing to make smart decisions to maintain our standards to support quality of life. Remember to vote. And until we meet again, I am Julie Ritz-Schlefer, and I hope that you are all living your best life here in Plymouth, Minnesota.
Thank you.
A place where dreams come true.
Next up, Shyne Mahi and then Kim Nelson. Shyne Mahi?
First of all, I want to thank you all who are sitting here and spending your evening with us and listening to us all and the people who are on, watching live and people who are gonna watch later, recorded version. I really thank you from my tip, from my heart for giving us this opportunity to talk and let us talk to you about what we want to do and how we want to do and express ourselves. And my name is Shyne Mahi. As I told you earlier, I go by Shyne Mahi. And I'm a practicing physician. And I, this is all new to me, I mean, to be on a city council or something. But volunteering and helping people and serving is something which I've always been doing, and that is the only thing I know. I served people, being a physician. I served US Army, being in the Army. And I am a small business owner. business owner, I'm in making money for Plymouth City, and also I'm in the food business, which kind of helped people to make their happy eating food, so. And I'm mom of two. My older one is serving US Air Force, he's Officer L-2, and my younger one is in, was at a high school in his senior year, and he's serving the community too. He's the explorers captain, and we all believe in serving, and my husband is a big volunteer for Plymouth City, and we support law enforcement and fire department. And I want to ask you all to vote for me on November 5th, and my name is Shyne Mahi. And if you want to learn more about me, please do visit my website, letplymouthshine.com. I want to shine the Plymouth City. Thank you.
Kim Nelson?
First, once again, thank you to the League of Women Voters and the work you do. Thank you to my colleagues up here, fellow candidates. It takes a lot to run for office. Welcome to the 1%, the 1% of people that filed to run for office, so. And then thank you to the people of Plymouth, those that are here tonight, those that are home, at home, and those that will be watching later. I want to just take a moment just to, first of all, say it's been my absolute honor to serve as your Ward One city council member. I want to point out that I represent all the folks in Plymouth, not just Ward One, but as we make decisions on city council, we need to keep everyone in mind in our city. Not only those who can vote, but those who can't vote, children, newly immigrated folks, we have to keep everyone in mind. So I am here to be absolutely accessible. Once again, my phone number is 763-349-0440. Give me a call, I'm happy to hear from you. Quick bit about my professional experience, once again, I'm a Governor Affairs Director for North Central State's Regional Council of Carpenters. I work with municipalities throughout the metro. I understand the interconnectedness between our municipality, county government, state government, and federal government. I'm committed to do everything I can to bring resources back into this city. And finally, I genuinely want to get to know all my neighbors. I set out eight years ago now, out on a mission to talk with my neighbors, regardless of political party, to get to know them. I continue on that journey today. I sincerely hope y'all give me a call. Please remember, vote Kim Nelson for Ward One Plymouth City Council.
Thank you. And finally, Scott Aldrich?
Yep, so I'm Scott Aldrich. I'm running for Ward Three. Those that know me will know that I enjoy spending time with my kids a lot, spending time with people that I love. Playing basketball, I do that a few nights a week, there's a pretty good, you know, group of dads in Plymouth that we get together with a couple nights a week. And the other thing that I, and I like pickleball too, and the other thing that I, that I really like to do is I like to work, and it sounds weird, but when people ask me, what do you like to do? I really do like to work. I like to keep my brain busy. I like to continuously try new things and do stuff. And so, I've been applying that to running for council. I mean, my goal is to knock on every single door in my ward and get to know every single person. And I've gone to a very wide range of houses and places of living, and it's been really interesting, and I, and I love the experience. You know, my main platform is really, and I said it at the beginning, I think Plymouth is a well-run city. It's been well-run for decades, and I want that to continue. And I know that, you know, the guy that was in the spot before he stepped down recently, he did, he did a great job, and I want to make sure whoever replaces him does a great job as well. And, and one thing about me is I'm not gonna have any political lean, and I don't think that belongs in city politics. I mean, I really want, you know, to focus on, you know, people just want their roads paved, police and fire funded, fiscal responsibility, just keeping the city great. And I'd appreciate any support. I'm running for Ward Three. My name is Scott Aldrich. Thank you.
Thank you. This concludes the Plymouth City Council Candidate Forum. On behalf of the League of Women Voters, I thank the candidates for being part of the democratic process by running for office and loving your community enough to do it, and for being willing to serve your community. Please join me in thanking the candidates with our applause. Thank you also to the League of Women Voter Volunteers, our audience here, and those viewing this event virtually, for your participation in the candidate forum. Thank you to the Plymouth City staff, as always, for supporting this event, and the CCX Media for broadcasting live, live streaming and recording tonight's forum. They're fabulous. On-demand viewing can be accessed at lvwwpa.org. For additional election information, we encourage you to visit vote411.org, the League of Women Voters award-winning one-stop shop where voters can register to vote, find their polling place, and learn how candidates stand on issues. Please remember to vote in the November 5th election by absentee ballot or in person. On the November ballot, Minnesota voters will be asked to reauthorize or end a constitutional amendment allocating 40% of state lottery proceeds to the Environment and Natural Resources Trust Fund. Over 50% of voters must vote yes to approve constitutional protection of the system. Leaving the question blank counts as a no vote. I'm gonna say that again because it's super important. Leaving the question blank counts as a no vote. Please be sure to look for the amendment and vote. Early voting begins this Friday, September 20th. Your vote is your voice. LWV welcomes new members, both men and women, at lwowp-a.org. Thank you and good night.